This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman.
Here.
Commissioner Ginger.
She's here.
She's here, she's.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here. All those wishing to participate in the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, we stand.
I pray, dear heavenly Father, in the face of many choices that life increasingly requires, help us to make the right decisions and to walk in the right direction. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, our fire department, city workers and hospital workers for their safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? There's not. Saying none, I'll make entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I approve the agenda as printed.
I second it.
Motion has been made and seconded for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Awards and proclamation, there is one proclamation. I'll go and read it here. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Week in conjunction with National Suicide Prevention Month is an annual week-long campaign in the United States to inform and engage health professionals in the general public about suicide prevention and warning signs of suicide. And whereas by drawing attention to the problem of suicide in the United States, the campaign also strives to reduce the stigma surrounding the topic as well as encourage a pursuit of mental health assistance and support people who have attempted suicide. And whereas as part of the campaign, health organizations are encouraged to conduct depression screenings, including self-administered and online tests, and refer interested individuals to a national toll-free crisis telephone number 1-800-273-TALK. And whereas since 1975, National Suicide Prevention Week awareness events are held throughout the week corresponding to World Suicide Prevention Day, which is recognized annually on the 10th of September. Now therefore, I Scott Rogers, Mayor of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 5th through the 11th, 2021, as National Suicide Prevention Week in Arkansas City, Kansas. I further call upon all citizens of Arkansas City to observe September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Month. And then we have some people here from the police department.
Wave your hand.
I'm not sure what it says. They're asking what your shirt says. It says Suicide Prevention of Cali County.
Oh.
No one fights alone.
Stand over just a little bit more.
Stand in front of us.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for what you're doing.
Thanks.
Oh wow, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
You can wear that all week. It's Suicide Prevention Week.
Oh, thank you.
You have me God-sized.
Uh, yeah, it'll be fine.
This really helps me. It hurt me so much 20 shots.
Thank you.
Comments from the audience for items not on the agenda? I see Mr. Taylor.
Harrison Taylor, 525 North Fourth Street. Anyway, I'd like to talk about the Thursday meetings we've been having. And what a great opportunity it is. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Welch for coming to the meeting and Commissioner Ginger and also our city manager Randy Frazier for coming to the meetings. I think it's been a very valuable time. There is a certain percentage of our city that won't answer surveys. They won't come to these meetings because most people think they're boring. So, but there are a lot of people that have ideas that they want to share. And yeah, those meetings have been pitifully small, but it's a beginning. It's a start. I think if we were to schedule these meetings maybe a couple of times a year and word was to get out, that they could actually become a very popular choice for citizens to come and air their grievances, but also to become informed about what the situation is that the city is in, financially and other things. Cause there's a lot of people, they just don't know what's happening in our city. And it's been a great educational experience, I think, for the citizens that have come. I would like to encourage you that have not come yet to really consider coming. I think it would be a great asset to the city if the full commission showed unified support and came to these meetings. The citizens, I think, would respond in a very positive way. I feel that there's a very big disconnect between the city government and citizens in the city. I've noticed that as a newcomer of six years now, that we need to bridge that gap. There's a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of old information that's water under the bridge and we're moving forward. And I think citizens need to let go of some of these grudges. I know that you guys are very busy. You have a lot of meetings, cause I go to the same meetings you go to. And some of you guys have work and you have families and it takes you away. I feel these meetings are very important. They're very worthwhile. Public service is just that. It's service. And it's a big commitment, I know, because of all the meetings you guys have. So anyway, please consider, I think we're having one or two more meetings. Two more meetings, fantastic. So please consider coming to these meetings, even though the audience is pitifully small. It's a start. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say I agree with the town hall meetings and we should do the town hall meetings. I think it needs to be something discussed at a city commission level in which we can pick the time, date, location, and topics to be discussed as a city commission. I was unaware of the town hall meetings till Monday evening and it was in the paper Tuesday. So it was kind of already decided before we got on. I think that we should do them a couple of times a year. I don't think that's a bad idea. I just think we need to make sure as a city commission, we're behind the discussions and those who have made their decisions already. So, I mean, that's why I haven't gone is, you know, I've got other stuff too and they already picked and Thursday nights don't work. So traveler knew about it before I did. So I agree we need to do it.
So it has to be declared a meeting in the paper. And I think if two commissioners are there, it should be sufficient. Cause I can't make it on Thursdays. I have other things myself. So. And to Mr. Taylor's remark about misinformation, I don't know where they're getting their misinformation from. If you could enlighten us on that, we'd like to correct it. Cause if they listen to commission meetings, they would get the information that is correct. So I don't know where they're getting their misinformation. Or have you heard that?
Facebook.
I think Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Ginger would agree with me. People don't really understand how small amount the city gets of every tax dollar. That's a big one. There are people holding grudges from the past because maybe their street didn't get fixed quickly or the hospital was expensive, the water treatment plant was expensive. So these people are holding on to things from the past that are really, I think, inhibiting us as a city moving forward. Because I think that the commission now is working hard to make the city a better place. I think all of you are. Unfortunately, a lot of people in the city don't realize that. We had a city manager before that was creating a lot of negative energy and a lot of people are holding on to that. I feel unfairly.
I'm sorry that they feel that way, but I don't think we've given ourselves misinformation. I think it's passed on on Facebook, which is bad.
Exactly.
We have, these are recorded. So if they, and these are played on YouTube. And what else are they played on Andrew? The city state, I mean, cost channel?
It's YouTube.
Aren't they? Just on YouTube, okay.
Yeah, this is not your fault. This is nobody's fault. These are.
It's the citizens' fault that they don't look at it.
Conceptions. But I think these meetings give people a chance to bring those out. And I mean, they were going toe-to-toe with these two ladies and you know, they were shaking their hands at them. And I think their preaches are quiet. So they just needed to be educated that we are on your side. We're working together.
Thank you, Harrison.
Okay, thank you.
Harrison. Any other comments? I didn't see anyone sign up. Saying none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the approved August 3rd, 2021 regular meeting minutes and approval resolution authorizing a public meeting of the governing body to attend a special land bank board of trustees meeting at our next city meeting, which is September 7th at 5:00 PM.
I saw my.
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a contract agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald's as construction constructors for design build for the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvement project for an amount not to exceed $12,85,118.
So we got a meeting, you know, the joint venture went back out to, since the bids that gotten on the equipment had been kind of past the due date and they kind of reaffirmed up those bids. It came in about $90,000 higher than the original bid. So, but like we talked about in our work session the other day, what we're doing is adjusting that that $500,000 in the loan documents we talked about for the contingencies. We'll move that down to 410,000 in the loan documents and to, which is exactly why we had that $500,000 in there was for these types of things. So, and they also checked in on the local crane. That's a totally different type of crane that would need to have another crane set it up. It would be on site for long-term. So it was quite a bit more expensive to use the local crane. So.
Well, it did hurt to try. I mean, I just.
No, exactly.
So if we go ahead and approve this contract with a $90,000, well, it's not more, but if we go ahead and approve this contract, will it tie in, I mean, submit those prices in place for us?
It will be posted as many, when a notice to proceed is issued on the contract, which is the second stage after it's been, after it's signed, then we can go write those purchase orders and lock that.
Okay.
There'll be a few things that.
And the price you're still, oh, I mean, we're still in that.
No, he just said that.
We're good through August 23rd right now.
Yeah.
So we got updated pricing.
Okay. That was an extra $90,000?
Correct.
Okay.
The next step that we need to get done is the loan approval from KDHE. Before we can lock in those big items, because we've got to have that loan approved to lock those in. So. So that's our next, our next big steps on that. So. That's why we had that contingency in there, because we've got to have that cushion for these things.
Oh, you got it.
Start right here. See, there is the message. Let's get here. Randy, you have, your paper is driving me crazy. I'll try to get this started. We, the governing body of the city of Arkansas City, hereby authorizes the mayor of the city of Arkansas City to execute an agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald's CAS constructors for design building for the 2021 wastewater treatment plant improvement project for the amount not to exceed.
$12 million. That's got to be on contingent.
Yeah, I would say we make the motion.
Yeah.
Approval will be contingent upon the general scope consensus of the project by KDHE and with the understanding that the owner approval of the construction documents will only be provided after receipt of KDHE approval of said construction documents.
That's the whole, that's the whole thing, right?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
So a motion has been made and seconded to authorize a city to enter that agreement with Burns &amp; Mc has construction for not to exceed $12,85,118. And it'll be contingent upon that general scope that we just mentioned as a part.
When do you anticipate approval of the KDHE loan?
So we have, we have to have some public hearings. So we're going to be into mid-September to get to that.
Have no guarantee of the pricing.
Yeah, I mean.
When we.
One option, again, the procedural, we need to be able to write to start committing costs on the project on the city's back. So.
But that's not this.
But we have a two-stage process or two-stage notice to proceed in the contract. The first one is $2 million that we could go ahead and start locking in pricing. We can't do the balance of that contract amount until.
Which we, yeah, and so we have, that's that $2 million we have in place already.
And so then you're going to lock in.
So that's a right, you know, notice to proceed to build, to lock those prices in. And there's two notes to proceed through in our contract.
And is that going to happen by the, because when we had.
You're wanting to make sure this price doesn't go up more.
Well, when we had our meeting, we were told that it would start in August and then April of '23. Then a couple of weeks later, it was going to be June of '23. And now we've got already a $90,000, which was supposed to be held till the August 23rd.
Yes.
With an additional $90,000 off of what you said in the meeting two weeks ago. And that's been because of.
That was July 21st, two weeks ago. Grasping, brought in pricing through September 23rd, August 23rd, which we got.
Okay. Okay. But I mean, is that gonna?
If we can get a notice to proceed for the $2 million by August 30th, I think I'm pretty confident we can get all the majority, the big two items that we are seeing priced up. That $2 million is, I think, a different avenue. Ideally, we'll be funded through the loan. But it's.
We have, we have cash on hand.
That's why the city.
Yeah. That's why we divide that up, because we have the $2 million cash on hand that we can commit to. And then the other, the next notice to proceed will be for the loan, for that other bigger amount for the loan that we're going to, you know, for the money we have to borrow.
Is that authorization in this resolution?
Yeah, it's in contract.
This contract, I don't see it there.
It's in the whole document.
Document, yeah, it's the whole.
Oh, okay.
And it's in your packet.
Lot of pages.
Yeah, a lot of pages.
Yeah.
So I think if the contract is signed today, but that's not how the motion I think is made, but if it's entered today, then really the notice to proceed is what would need to be issued contingent upon.
And you're going to be going up there and carrying that to the evidence.
Yeah.
And will you be doing it this week or?
We're trying to get it next, probably around next week. Cause we're trying to, we'd like to get our August 30th date of contract.
Okay.
So can it vote it on tonight, the mayor signs? Is that what you're, is that what this, is that's what it says, is that he's signing? So do we have the paperwork for him to sign?
Yeah, there is a, there is a, the signature page, yes.
Well, then you can take that KDHE this week and maybe start.
I'll be sending KDHE for signature.
Okay. Cause that's the one I'm worried about. Yeah, because they're bureaucrats. They take long time.
You don't need anything else from us to proceed. The notice to proceed, we need to make another motion contingent on that.
As Scott, if you enter into the agreement, the agreement that allows the city to issue, please have to issue.
Alright, sounds good. That's what I was, I want to make sure. I want to make sure we don't approve this. And then everyone assume we're good and then find out what you needed in another motion or meeting.
We need to sign that paper, Mayor. Need more, yeah.
And then we can't, we can't move forward with the second, uh, proceed until the loans.
That will come.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, motion's been, was it made and seconded, right? So it's a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. And next up will be.
So you're going to wait, you'll get, you'll take, when he signs it tonight, you'll take that back with you? Okay. I won't leave.
And you'll, Daniel will be working our side of it too, to kind of hopefully expedite things. It shouldn't take them long to get through. It's not, all we're doing is replacing, you know, just fixing what we have. So we're not changing processes or anything different. So it shouldn't be a.
You think we should all call them?
Call them at midnight tonight.
Yeah, down here from Mark City. Didn't know if we'd heard from anyone else.
I'll see if I can get some cell phone numbers for you.
Want them to say no right fast?
We do not disturb for me.
Yeah.
Let the experts do it.
Next up, new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement with professional engineering consultants of Arkansas City to develop a water master plan for an amount not to exceed $43,500.
Oh, right.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioner. Two substantial water line projects actually been driven by water quality complaints. Well, going forward, we need to get a plan in place. So we're, we're good, we're taking care of the contingencies of the system. And the best way to do that is to have PBC actually develop a model and do it on a program called Water Jeeves. And they'll, they'll come do some flows and pressures at different spots they decided to do to calibrate. And then they can actually run here, somewhere, where we're good in this box. And they'll actually work with this to make it as a 20-year. Water distribution system.
Well, basically, Rod, this will tell us that, like, you know, we're talking about out east, you know, we, right now, we, you know, if a house gets on fire, it's going to burn down. We have no water system out there. But this will, this should tell us, once we get it done, how big a tower, where it needs to be put at and so forth. Is that right?
Yes, all this, all this data will all be used for any improvements we need. And after the improvements made, they can run the model and tell us. How's the way we place somewhere else that we.
And also it's going to tell us where our water towers up north with Creekstone and with the expansion and maybe more housing stuff up there, it'll be able to tell us what, we may have to size up another tower in that area or whatever.
That's very true.
Okay.
We already know we don't have enough storage. And if we don't have a plan, it's hard to.
Right. We're just shooting in the blind. I mean, yeah.
You know, I told Randy, I told him to come by the seat of my pants.
Yeah.
That doesn't get you.
Well, also, you know, with that, with the lines going up there, you know, where they're kind of, they're not all, you know, together and stuff. Maybe they could help us out, you know, where we may have to join some lines together and stuff like that, make it more efficient. You think or not?
Yeah, and also we've got a lot of. This is where water gets old in that country. That's what we're trying to. Get citizens complaints from that.
Yeah.
That's it. That's it's to work to $20,000.
Right now, we don't have anything, I mean, you know, I mean, we're just guessing everything right now. You know, I know it's cost probably a bit of money to do this, but I think it's money will, will be well spent because we'll know exactly what we need to do, where we don't have to oversize or undersize, you know, and stuff like that. They'll help us get the right size and where to put it and all so forth. That being said, I'll make a motion to consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into agreement with professional engineering consultants, PBC of Wichita, Kansas, to develop water master plan for an amount not to exceed $43,500.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. And this is a voice vote.
I think, the other thing is that we have, you know, expansion, you know, the infrastructure, you know, through the government coming up. They've got water plants in there. Hopefully they might have something in there where we can use, you know, to help us out, you know, whether we build a tower or whatever down the road, you know, this will help all of that.
Yeah.
And another thing you haven't thought of Jay is, is besides using data from this model to see where we need to stand by now. We also have to make sure that that booster station doesn't get starched for water, deep enough water.
Yeah.
So it's all, it's almost like.
Yeah. So Rod, that booster station that's on the east side, is it on the other side of the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
Is that that little?
Chad Street and Chestnut.
Okay. How old is that pump?
It was, those were put in in 1988, temporary until we got a stand-by.
Well, they're pretty, pretty standard. I mean, they're pretty permanent now, aren't they?
Yeah. Yeah, it might take a little modification on the pumps. This model will help us know what we need to modify.
Do you have any idea of how many houses that are out there on the east side of the river? That, and there's more going, well, I guess there's more going in on city property. I would guess there's probably at least 300 plus out there. Would that pump have to be bigger?
Uh, the pressure will be developed from the stand-by.
Okay. For the tower?
Yeah.
I would say stand-by.
I know what you're talking about, yeah, tower.
Won't be an elevated tower, like Brian.
Yeah.
I don't know that for sure. Say as a design later.
Well, right now, you know, if it's high or shut there, they can't pump, you know, they can't pump.
And we can't.
Yeah.
And we placed a lot of.
Eyes out in that area, you know, I mean, it's still, there's still some. Yeah. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next up on new business.
Select three voting delegates for three alternates to the 2021 League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Business Meeting on Monday, October 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to get you all signed up and get rooms and stuff too.
Or is that going to be it?
You can.
Can we get a limousine?
I have to be an alternate.
No, city managers, are they voting members too of that? So.
If we make you one.
Yeah, I assume we would want to make him one.
Mr. Fraser, voting member. Our voting members.
Who's that? Oh, Randy.
Oh, our city.
That's what I was getting, I would hope he would be one of them. So.
I can't make that commitment right now. I've got too much going on in October. I'll have to check my schedule. I can't tell you right now.
I can go. What time?
Well, it's.
An all-day Monday?
I don't have the schedule in front of me, but it, normally the business meeting is at the end of the day on Monday, which around the two o'clock-ish.
So we go on Sunday?
It's a Saturday, Sunday and Monday. And.
So we'd go up Saturday or?
Yeah, so you can go any of the.
So they'll have the, they'll have the workshops and all that stuff. Okay.
So when you go ahead and put Karen Canyon and Randy as the delegates for now.
Yeah, I'll check my schedule.
Jay, Dwayne and I as alternates, what we're getting at. Running a motion for that or?
I'd like that motion. I'll second it.
I'll make, so motion has been made to make Commissioner Ginger, Commissioner Welch and City Manager Frazier the delegates for the 2021 League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Business Meeting and Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Eastman and Mayor Rogers as the alternate delegates. And Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Eastman and Mayor Rogers as the alternate delegates for that meeting. And Dwayne seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Any other, now I don't see any other new business. Do you have any? Next up's city manager report.
Alright. Well, uh, Josh, myself and, uh, Mike Bellis and then, uh, Paisley, Harrington, Camber. Carrie, um, from Cali First, we all attended the, uh, upstairs downtown conference in Hutch yesterday and this, and this morning. It's on, uh, residential housing in, uh, downtowns. Um, and it was very informative and, um, I think we all kind of, we're, came back very excited about, uh, trying to work on some projects here. So, um, we're going to get, we're going to kind of circle back around in the next week or two, um, kind of debrief each other. And, and so we'll, we'll definitely be keeping you guys in, in, uh, in the loop on that. And, and hopefully we can start, uh, pulling all tools together and having a really nice toolbox on, on helping people develop downtown. There's things that we can do to, to take, um, hurdles away with code. And there's some different financing tools that are available that, um, you can get creative and try to find ways to make, make a project work. So it was, it was a really good, really good workshop and I'm glad we went. So we'll keep you posted on that. With housing being such a big, big need in our community and we have all those, um, square foot up there, you know, it just needs to be, be developed into residential. So I'm excited about it. So. Then the, uh, there's a job fair, um, tomorrow from 10:30 AM till 5:00 PM. The city, the fire AMS and the police departments will participate. It'll be over at the Ag Building. So if any of you are looking for a job, we've got some openings at City. So.
They don't hire old people.
Get you back from dispatch.
The, the bike parade, they get canceled? Did I see that?
Yes, it, they did. I think they postponed it, I think, because of COVID.
Yeah, I think that's all.
That's all that. Don't quote me on that.
Um, Creekstone Farms and the city Cali County Health Department will host a free, um, COVID vaccination clinic, uh, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, August 24th at the Ag Building. It's free to the, and open to the public. Um, the Burford Theater Arts will host a concert by Billy Bob Thornton and the Box Masters, starting at 8:00 PM on Saturday, August 21st over at the Burford. So that'll be an interesting. I believe Bob Thornton's an interesting fellow. Dark City Farm Market, um, four to 6:30 PM, Tuesday, August 24th, August 31st and September 7th over at the Rotunda. Uh, so it looks like the season ends September 28th. Cali County Indoor Market, um, next event will be five to eight on Wednesday, August 25th, Burford. And the Arkansas City Relay for Life will be 6:00 PM to midnight, Saturday, August 28th at Wilson Park. Eliminaries will be placed throughout the park and possibly around the vacant lot over at the old hospital lot. Um, Burford Theater will host the concert by the Wichita Yacht Club, 7:00 PM, Saturday, the 28th of August over at Burford. And the William Newton Hospital, the city Cali County Health Department and the Community Health Center will host a community, or a town hall, talk, can't talk, town hall meeting, uh, for the 2021 Community Health Needs Assessment. Uh, that'll be 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM, Tuesday, August 31st, over at the Baden Square Community Center. And that's all I got.
The other thing was, first of all, the thing that I saw canceled was not the bike. It was the birthing suite open house. So I would assume unless someone else saw the SCK Health bicycle rodeo, probably still going on.
It was canceled.
It was canceled. It was, it was. I didn't see it on Facebook.
I just seen it.
So there you go. And, uh, then the other thing we need to discuss is the work session. City Hall is going to be closed Monday, September 6th. We do have a Labor Day weekend, a work session scheduled for September 3rd. We want to postpone it. Cancel it, move it.
Do we know of anything big that needs to be handled?
About this point.
We can always call it if there's something shows up.
And I say we cancel unless something comes up.
Yeah.
That sound 30 to you guys? September 3rd would have been a work session. The city offices are closed September 6th. So.
Looks good.
That's all I have.
Don't forget the land bank board of trustees, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, September 7th.
Five o'clock for our next, five o'clock commercial meeting. Anything else? Chief Burr, Mike, Andrew, anything? Burr from Rod. He might spend more money if he gets it.
He spent his allowance.
He did. So.
Well, I'd like to watch me adjourn.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll stay and sign that.